Hopefully, thanks Jeff, the last on Zoom. We are contemplating whether or not, depending what happens over the holidays and with the new Omicron version of the virus, whether or not we can return to an in-person meeting or some combination of Zoom and in-person. So we will update you after the first of the year on that. I'm going to go ahead and move into the first responders. I know that Officer Santos is going to be here. I don't see her yet. We will loop back once I see her show up in our little set of boxes. Do we have anyone here from the fire department? Okay, didn't think I saw anyone. We're going to go ahead and jump ahead. President's report and approval of the minutes. Already gave you the gist of my report is that we will hopefully be returning to in-person meetings. Stay tuned. The November minutes have been up on the website and what we will do is ask if anyone has found a change or correction of any kind. If we don't have any changes or corrections, we are going to approve what is there. Okay, hearing no changes or corrections, we will accept the minutes as written. And we're going to move in now to our featured program for the evening. That's going to be a presentation by the Miramasa High School Orchestra and I'm going to defer now to Matthew Mulvaney, the director, to introduce the program.
Hi, it's nice to see everybody, even virtually. Hopefully we'll see everyone in real life pretty soon. We're actually going to have our orchestra concert is going to be live on campus on December 14th and 15th this year, which is exciting. So we're still jumping through. I don't want to say hoops, but we're making sure we're following all the protocols and safety procedures that are going to be required to make that happen. But that'll happen December 14th and 15th here on campus. I've got a couple of short things that we put together. It might help if other folks mute them their microphone because otherwise you might hear the...
I'm getting muted, everyone. So you'll have to unmute yourself after I do this.
Okay. Great, easy. So we have a winter concert on December 14th and 15th and typically we do not play a ton of holiday music. It's more of a winter concert. But I talked to Pam Stevens and she was like, could you play some holiday music? I said, sure. So I handed some stuff out this morning. So I'm going to share a screen. And I've got a few things to share with you. So Pam and Jeff, maybe I'll look to you. You can give me a thumbs up if you can hear it and see it once I share it with you. Can you see this all right?
I see an Instagram that says Miramasa Orchestra.
Lovely, here you go. So I've got three. Let me drag this down here. Okay, actually that's... See here, just going to move this over here for a moment. I'm going to make this bigger. All right, so I've got three short clips. First one, this was in class today and I thought it would be fun to hand something out and record it right away. So literally I printed this out this morning. I made quick copies for the students. This is just a quick little heart the Herald Angels sing. I handed out this morning. I said, great, you've got a minute to learn it. Ready? Go learn it. And then they did. And I said, great, now we are going to record it. So I handed off my cellphone to one of a colleague, an SDSU friend who we had with us. And here is that. Jeff, if you could just give me a thumbs up if you could hear it when it plays and then I'll know that we're good. All right, so there is a tune number one. So we've got a couple of things to share. Like I said, we handed that one out this morning and learned it quick, but it was a decent little exercise. So this is one of our classes. There's two other classes. There's about 110 to 115 string players, right, here on campus, which is great. We got some more. Next one, here you go. Here's a short little clip. This is going to be... This is going to be the introduction to the Holberg Suite by Ed... Let me stop that for a minute. This is the introduction to the Holberg Suite by Edvard Grieg. Sorry about that. And this is the introduction to the first movement, right? So here is like maybe the first minute or so from the Holberg Suite, the prelude. Great, so that was the second one. So that's a multi-moving piece by Edvard Grieg. We're playing the first, second, and fifth movements at the concert coming up in December, right? So that's the beginning of the first one. The last thing we have to share quickly is if you've been around orchestra program, we try to do traditional pieces, but we also try to do new things and things that are just a little bit different. This isn't actually from there, but what I was going to say is we're playing traditional pieces at the winter concert and then we're also playing a couple of pieces by modern composers. So it's fun to interact with like living composers who are current and working out. One of the pieces we're playing is by a woman. Her name is Ida S. Evensen and she released an album in April. And we literally emailed her publishing company. We said, hey, her representation, we said, could you print the parts to this piece? I really like it. I think it's pretty. So they contacted her agent and they got in touch with her publisher out in the UK. And anyways, they printed the parts and from Iceland, she was able to help get us the parts and she sent us a message on Instagram wishing us all the best of luck. And it's kind of fun, I think, to be able to not just play pieces that were written 100 or 200 years ago, but to interact with current composers. Anyways, that's something that I feel like we do. I did have an Instagram page up. If you're curious what we're up to, you can always scroll to our Instagram page or our Facebook page. Couple of highlights, I guess, recently before I get to the last clip is really thankful to our school foundation, right? Which I know often receives possibly support from the town council, but we were able to get a new base, right? Which is fantastic because ours are pretty ancient. That was that. What else were able to do? We, even though it's been a little bit of a tricky moment, we've still been performing. So this was some photos from a concert we had outside back in October. So we put all the string players in the new 700 courtyard on campus and we potted them all up and everybody's masked up and ready to go and they're outside and we had friends and family there and we're able to have a concert for folks. And we played a bunch of student requests and some other things. So there's that. And then I thought it would be cool to show just a few photos in case you haven't been to the new music facility. So the videos were taken in the new orchestra classroom and then sometimes we rehearse down the hall in the new band classroom, which is pictured here. So we use that classroom when we have like large groups or we're combining multiple classes, you know, for a rehearsal. So if you haven't been to the new facility, it's kind of like the tour of the new music building that you see out in your Taco Bell. And it's fabulous and we are really, really thankful to have it. So the last thing I have today is we have students who do a lot of different things. They're in ROTC and they're in athletics and they do theater and they do key club. They also play different musical instruments. So this is one of our violin players who sat down at the piano and was kind enough to record a little tune for you before I head on out today. So this is Have Yourself a Merry Little Christmas with Hubert. He plays violin and he's a senior. He played with us at Carnegie Hall when we went just a couple of years ago with the orchestra when we all played at Carnegie Hall. But he also played at Carnegie Hall that same year on piano as a soloist. He flew back to New York and had two trips to New York City that year, which was pretty cool. So here is Hubert with a little holiday tune for everybody. So anyways, I guess that's a quick couple of minutes insight into what we're doing on campus with music and pieces and kids and multi-talented students all over the place. I see that Ms. Bazo is here and I'm definitely thankful for the support from the Board of Education. Hopefully that'll continue. All right, we can't do anything without support from the board, Ms. Bazo.
Thank you, Matt. I was going to ask if it's possible to send that video my way. I have like three minutes of board report tomorrow and I don't really have anything prepared. So maybe I can feature one of those little video clips. You choose which one you want to feature and I'll feature it at the board meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I can send them all over and you can just choose what you want. I'll just share it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
But no, thank you. I mean, we really appreciate it and you know, we can't do anything without, it takes a lot of different folks pulling all in the same direction to get things to actually happen. So whether it's the Miramasa Town Council or the Foundation or the Board of Education, it's nice as a co-curricular sort of class and activity to have that support from everyone around. And that includes our school administration, like Mr. Sabins and all of our counselors and everything too. So we're certainly appreciative of all the support we get from everybody. So yeah, any questions for me or anything?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Do you really think that big music building that they built is worth it? I mean, do you think these kids are going to benefit from that?
Well, you're asking a music teacher. So the answer is yeah.
I mean, I think they're doing great. I mean, this is awesome. So I just want to make sure you appreciated what they're doing.
Oh, no, we certainly appreciate it and the building is great and frankly, it's fantastic for that room that I showed you, the band room, it's as big as it is because it's designed to put the whole marching band inside at the same time, which we've never been able to do. So now in the event that it's raining or, you know, I don't want to say they were ever like a security issue or something, we can put all the students in one classroom, which we were just never able to. So it's fantastic and we certainly appreciate it and it's not something we take for granted on a daily basis. We're happy to be here and we're thankful to have really quality classrooms on campus.
Does Jeff Sabins play any kind of musical instruments?
Does Jeff Sabins play any instruments? He came with us to New York City, but he has never picked up an instrument to my knowledge.
And keep him out of the building.
Yeah, I'd be happy to maybe give him some sleigh bells or something to play at a concert at some point.
Matt, I want to thank you. Oh, one more question from Pam.
I was just going to say, shifting gears while we've got you here, I know that you also are involved with the band too. And update on how things are going with planning and fundraising for the Rose Parade trip that's going to be happening very soon.
It is. It is happening sooner, sooner and sooner every hour, actually. We're counting hours, not days. But it's going to be fantastic. They've got a few opportunities. So it's not just the parade. So they end up, they do an event they call Band Fest, which is at Pasadena City College where all the performing groups go up and they demonstrate what they've been working on throughout the fall, like whether they're the Bands of America Honor Group or high school groups. Gotcha. Danielle, I'll get to that one. So they do Band Fest one day and then the next day, they most of the... The next... The next day after Band Fest, they go to Disney typically and they'll do a parade at Disneyland and then finally it's the Rose Parade on the first.
The band concert is scheduled for this Thursday, I think, right? The ninth.
The band concert is scheduled for this Thursday, the ninth. It'll be outdoors over at the stadium. And yes, that is where that will be.
And I think there's a chance of rain, so I don't know how that...
I know Missy is currently working with Mr. Sabins on a contingency plan in the event that it rains. But that was a discussion I know she was having with him last week, but we're hopeful that it's San Diego and it always says it's going to rain and then it never does, right? So we're hopeful it's one of those San Diego rains where it looks like it's going to rain in the morning and then it blows over by lunchtime.
Could well be. Well, please let the orchestra students know how wonderful those videos were. This really started our meeting off well. We appreciate it.
Will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matt. All right, moving on, we have a vote tonight on the fiscal year 2023 Miramasa Maintenance Assessment District Budget. And for the lead-in to that vote, Tom Dur.
I guess I'm on, huh? Okay, you've all had a chance to see the budget that we have proposed for 2023. Everybody has seen it, correct?
Yep.
Yes, no, maybe. Oh, you're all muted. I don't know. So, okay. Not much has changed in there. We have finished the Mercy Road Monument. And supposedly I have not seen it yet. I know, Joe, you told me to go drive by way back when and I haven't done it yet. But it's completed and so that'll be off of our projects that we have on this budget. And which is great. So now we can add something else on there. But what I'm proposing is for what we've got there to accept it as it is. We only did the CPI. We're not increasing anything else. Next year might be different because we are starting to lose the head pace that we've had on the monies that we had in reserve because we've dropped out on... We've had too much money in the past and now we propose a lot of money for future projects. But now they're being done and the monies are now being depleted. So at some point in time, we're going to have to do a an increase in the monies that we're asking for, but at this point in time, we do not need it. So everything's going to remain the same. So I'm asking for you to accept the budget as it is for the 2023. Joe, is there anything else I should add?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll second that.
We're going to go ahead. All members of the Miramasa Town Council, please either raise your hand visually or put up your hand in Zoom so that we can get a count. All those in favor?
I see six hands in Zoom.
I see 13 total. Is that correct?
Oh, nice shot.
We're being hacked. Nice, okay.
How many votes?
They're a little small. I'll give that one a five.
Let's see here. Do we have to leave and come back? Is that what we do? No, I can get rid of this.
No, thank you, Jeff.
Well done.
Oh, board people tonight, Jeff, we appreciate that. As they're saying, I counted 13. Is that correct? 13 hands up.
Want us to raise them again?
So I see four hands up and I see six hands raised on the... Seven hands up plus six on the...
Seven plus six is 13.
So it's 13, yep.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Take your hands down virtually if you have voted. See a couple of people still have their virtual Zoom hands up.
Bart, put your hand down.
I'm trying to get down. I'm trying.
You need to take another Zoom class, Marv.
You said I didn't shoot my movies like you did, Joe. Gosh.
That was the whole picture when I was younger.
We know that Marv's hand is just stuck right there. Okay, anyone opposed to adopting the Maintenance Assessment District Budget? Okay, I see no votes. Anyone abstaining? Okay, so for the record, 13-0-0, the fiscal year 23 Maintenance Assessment District Budget is passed.
Would you be able to send me a copy of this so I can send it to John Stephens to make sure that they are that this is a legitimate vote?
Yes, we can send you a memo stating that the vote was 13-0-0.
Very good.
All right, we are going to jump back to our first responders. I believe we have Captain Joe Raimondo here in the audience. Joe?
There it is. Good evening. I'm not on duty today. I'm at home. But thank you for the invite. I'm finally back. A few things today to talk about. Today we had one of our fire captains that had passed away. He'd been at Station 38 for many years. Today he was laid to rest in Oceanside. But he had been at Fire Station 38 for over five years previously. So we are kind of, the whole department's kind of saddened that we lost that fire captain. And that happened today. As far as the new things that are going on, we've had a transition between our previous ambulance company, which was AMR, and we are now in it with a new company called FALC. This transition is interesting and it's definitely showing some strain early on. But hopefully we'll get all these little details worked out. Some of the biggest issues that we've noticed so far is or even with AMR is lack of ambulance coverage in the area of Miramasa. Miramasa has two ambulances. They've added the third in the area or a fourth, excuse me. But unfortunately, they can't meet the staffing yet. So we have four ambulances in the area and generally only one ambulance that is covering it. And unfortunately, a lot of times they take the ambulance and they bring them down wherever there's the next call, which leaves a hole up in Miramasa. And so we're trying to get that fixed. Hopefully when they hire more, we'll have these holes patched up, but that's the condition now of the ambulance contract so far. And it's only been going on since the 27th, so it's still kind of a new thing for us.
And bring ARM back.
What's that?
Fire them. Bring the ARM back.
You know, unfortunately, it's the same. It's a lot of the same employees. It's just interesting thing. It's just, it's just a company change. The employees are the same. Unfortunately, what happened, it was, it was pretty bad with AMR as well in that we had less coverage. Right now, what FALC has said to us is that they're going to keep ambulances in our area. Unfortunately, I don't think they have enough ambulances yet. Or they have enough ambulances, but not enough personnel. What AMR did in the past was they would take our ambulance and send them to the border. They would send them downtown wherever it was needed. But that means once they lose, we lose our ambulances up here, then we're waiting from ambulances from down south. So it's just this chess game that they keep moving everything around. What we've liked them to do is keep our ambulances, once they go to the hospital, come back to the station into the district so that they can cover the area. And they have ambulances designated as float ambulances that can cover spots where there's holes. But what they're doing is they just take these station ambulances and move them around. That was both AMR and FALC currently. FALC has told us they weren't going to do that, but as it stands now, they are until they can get more personnel.
Maybe what we need to do is put the ambulances under sanddag because they have many, many millions of dollars to improve transportation in San Diego to make everybody get out of your car and use the bus.
Well, that is definitely beyond our control.
So Captain, is there anything that we as a community or the town council can do to assist you in explaining how important it is that they keep those ambulances in this area since we are probably the largest community in San Diego, yet we don't have a nearby hospital? It's even more important.
Yeah, you know, I would just talk to our council people, tell them how important it is. I know that other districts have done that and they've dedicated an ambulance there ensuring that they come back. And usually those are the areas that are the furthest edges of San Diego. But unfortunately for us, we're in the middle and there is so much going on in that they pull us, you know, they pull our ambulances left and right, which leaves a hole. And so a lot of times, we, as the first responder, we're waiting for an ambulance. And if it's critical, not too long ago, probably a month ago, and this was before the transition, we had, we had a patient that really needed to go to the hospital. And we were wondering if we were going to have to put her in the fire engine and that's not the best place to put a patient. When you have, you know, IVs and other kinds of things that you're working on, it's not safe. But it would be nice. What FALC has done though is added two ambulances to Fire Station 44. Unfortunately, we just need the staffing for that. But it would be nice to at least have all the ambulances come back to the station after they're done with their call.
Right. And the observation was just made in chat that of all the places in San Diego, not only are we the largest and we're in the middle, we are also the home to the training academies and we can't get consistent service despite Miramar housing, police, and fire. So it's kind of odd that we would be short under the circumstances. So I see that Sheldon is here from the D6 office. He and I will talk about how we can assist in making that need more apparent.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's a, need him to stay there in the, in the community. You know, in the Miramasa area. So yeah, I'll be waiting to hear from you, Barry. We can discuss that. Yeah, I wrote it down. I'm going to tell Chris, we have a staff meeting on, on Thursday. So I will tell him you know, what I've learned tonight.
Fabulous. Thank you, Sheldon.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions for the captain?
I'm just going to say something. This is Marv Miles. We had an exhaustive process with FALC. I don't employ, I'm not, I don't work with them. I don't get anything. I just know, I know one of the persons that is a critical player. She lives in Scripps Ranch and her name is Dani Wertz. And she'd been pushing on this for a long time. So give them a little bit of break. They've been coming from flat trying to get...
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm not putting this on the one company whatsoever. In fact, we were having the same issues with AMR. This is a growing pains right now as the transition. They've committed to making the changes we've asked for. So hopefully it works out. I'm just saying that as it stands now, we we're getting some holes and hopefully that doesn't affect the service throughout the, throughout the district. Regardless, the engine companies are running and we're there to... Regardless, the engine companies are running and we're there to help as soon as we can. It's just the transport to the hospital. That is a little bit delay.
It was the same problem with AMR and it's a case where I think they would, and I can't speak for them, but I think they would like to hire twenty or thirty more people to be able to put bodies in there. I just happened to be at Sharp Hospital at midnight this last Friday, and I can tell you that they're there, but it's a challenge. So it's, how do you get people? And it's like same thing. We have a problem about getting people that are going to be servers in a restaurant or whatever, all sorts of labor. So.
Correct. And they've committed to, they've actually have people in the pipeline. So I think that this will get better. There's a, it's a giant problem in that, you know, even when we drop people off at the hospital, the paramedics, even after we have their patients, they have to stay with the the patient until there's a bed. And sometimes that's an hour or two. And so they're stuck at the hospital waiting. That means that ambulance can't go back into service because the hospital doesn't have any active beds. So.
I think Danielle has a question.
You're muted.
Muted.
You're muted.
Danielle, you're muted. There you go.
There you go.
Joe, there was an article in the paper about, I think about twenty things they needed to fix. And they fixed them and they did it in good time. So it sounds promising.
It does. I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful it works out.
All right. Captain Raimondo, thank you for being here. We look forward to having you at our monthly meetings in 2022.
Sounds great. Have a great.
Great holiday. Take care.
You too. Bye bye.
All right, we have one more item. We had a vacancy for a one-year term as an at-large member. And Dorothy Lorenz, who's with us tonight, has been nominated. We took a poll of the board and her name is being put forth tonight to fill that one-year vacancy in 2022. So I would like to get a motion then a second to add Dorothy to fill that vacant spot and then a vote of the membership. So can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, Pam made the motion. And I think that was, who did we have? Joe made the second. All of our members who are in favor of Dorothy Lorenz filling the one-year term, raise your hand.
I see three in the, or four in the in the participants list. Actually, six.
Five, six, seven, eight. See nine hands up.
Marvin just turned his off. I don't know if he's aware.
There he is. He goes, yeah. So Marv's is up. So one, two, three, four. I see five of the little electronic hands.
Five electronic. And then I saw, is it one, two, three, four, or five? I see seven with hands up in video. All right, everybody with the electronic hands, go ahead and take your hands down. All right, is anyone opposed to the motion? I think Marv is just not taking his hand down.
Yes.
All right, anyone abstaining from the vote? Okay, what was our final total on hands up? Was it ten or eleven?
I thought it was twelve.
Twelve?
Yes.
That was seven plus five.
All right, so by a vote of twelve zero zero, Dorothy, welcome to the board for your one-year term.
Does that mean she has to bring cookies to the next meeting?
We're in person, absolutely. And Dorothy, we will have a board meeting next Monday night. You'll get a link to that. New board members coming in for next year and any who are moving, I don't think anybody's moving off at the moment. We'll all get together for a brief meeting and get ready for 2022. Congratulations. All right, we're moving on to community and government resources planning group. Jeff?
Okay, so we had a very interesting planning group meeting in November. We had three major items on the agenda. The first was a proposal for a community plan amendment initiation for a project, an industrial project just south of Carroll Canyon Road and just east of Eight-O-Five. It's an ambitious project, but it does have some big problems. In particular, it encroaches on on wetlands and riparian habitat. It's actually in Carroll Canyon. So we recommended on a vote of nine to five to deny their their application. We're just an advisory group, so that goes on to the planning commission now. And if they agree with us, then you will die. If they don't, then it will come back to us again later. Second thing was a presentation on the reconstruction of Gold Coast and Parkdale. I put that presentation up on the website. It has a lot of good details in it. The construction will start in the summer of 2022 and should be finished by the summer of 2023. So we've been looking forward to that one for a long time. And then the third thing was a project on BJ's Restaurant. They are going to be replacing the old Meanies Restaurant on in the Marcus Center. That was received enthusiastically and we unanimously recommended approval of that application. So those are the main business items. This did follow a community plan update meeting. For anyone who hasn't been following that, the city is proposing some big changes in the community plan. Massive amount of new housing along Miramasa Boulevard. Their estimate for the population, if all of it is built, would be about a hundred and sixty thousand, which would put Miramasa among the top two, the largest two hundred cities in the United States. So we've asked them to come back and evaluate all of the impacts of their proposals. They came back with kind of a preliminary traffic impact that I guess planning group was a bit skeptical of. They're talking about a lot more bus service along Miramasa Boulevard, but they would actually reduce Miramasa Boulevard to two lanes or to four lanes in places, two lanes each way with the bus lane on the outside of that. So the outside lane could have buses and HOV vehicles. Still, it's some, we don't have the details on the traffic study yet. We should get those within the next couple of months and we'll be looking at those, those very closely. Any questions? Okay, it's my report.
Thank you, Jeff. A lot for us to be aware of. All right, next up, we have from Miramasa Community Recreation Group, Joe Fratell.
Not a whole lot going on. I still haven't got an updated message from the city. The last I heard was Wagenheim could possibly start today. I never got over there to verify that, but hopefully, they're going to be starting on Wagenheim soon. And SOC will be started probably before February. And our swimming pool in Skateboard Park at the Community Guild Johnson is probably going to start if all the angels are in the same focus before the next year is over. Other than that, not a whole lot going on.
Any questions for Joe? All right, thanks, Joe.
You just muted yourself, Barry.
Yes, me and myself. From Miramar College, President Lundberg.
Hello, thank you, Barry. Hello, council members and community members of Miramasa. It's a pleasure to be here. My apologies for missing the last, I think, two meetings. Unavoidable things kept getting in the way and preempting me my being here, including my health in one instance. So non-COVID related, Tom, I'm happy that I'm not sharing that experience with you at this point. And I do plan to get my booster shot to try to prevent that. But just to give you a couple of things that might be of interest for you all in the community, Miramasa. I had been promoting the Equity Summit that we're going to have on October twenty-eighth. This is kind of the first in my presidency, anyway, of opening us up to the community, although we had to do that on Zoom, of course. But we had the first ever Constance M. Carroll Lecture Series. There was over a hundred people that came. There were quite a few community members. I was very surprised. And that was a success. So that'll be next October. October will do the same thing. And that'll be open, that evening lecture will be open to the community. And let me jump ahead on my list. And just since I mentioned opening to the community, just to extend again, Miramar College wants to be a part of the community. And we want to open the campus up to events and things like that. I know Joe works with that on the Joint Use Committee. And thank you for your service there, Joe. The, I'm really advocating. So if there's anything that, that Miramasa or any, any community groups or the town council want to hold at the campus, just let me know and we'll do everything we can to make sure that happens. I'm excited. One of the things I'm excited about coming back to California, but first time in higher education, is that it's actually written into law that the colleges have to be open to community events. And I think that's fantastic. Every place I've been before, it's like moving, I don't know, herds of elephants to get systems to allow community use, which is ridiculous, especially since our middle name is Community College, right? So we will be opening, fully reopen on January third. That means all services and everything fully face-to-face with classes. Of course, the, the interesting thing is that we don't know exactly how this is gonna, the world's different, you know, and I think it's not going to go back to exactly the same as it's been in the past. So, you know, I've had questions about the percentage of online classes versus face-to-face. It's never going to be what it was pre-pandemic. We've learned a lot about what we can do well online and students want that option. We've done student surveys and the, the results have shown that they, they want to see more options online. That's not to say that they want to go fully online. They just want some of their options to be online so that they can do that. So what that translates into, and what I've been telling our college community, is that that doesn't mean that we're going to scale back on student services at all because the students want us there fully for, for those kinds of things. But they want to scale back how much they're actually on campus for classes. So so you should see a lot of activity around the campus beginning, well, it would be February, of course, when the spring semester starts. We'll have intercession in January, though. Also, in the news of opening, we just did, participated in the ribbon cutting for the emergency vehicle operator course in O'Teiny Mesa. Now, it may seem like that's a long way away from Miramasa, but you'll recall that we do house the academy and we did from Prop N and Prop S. We did contribute a chunk to change to making that, that facility happen. So and of course, it's an extension and a piece of our training as well. So, so we were participating in that. It's a fantastic facility. It's like forty-four acres, I think. And it's, it's huge. And it allows our police sheriff and emergency vehicle operators to really get some practice for city driving as well as highway driving. The number one thing that these folks do with their time is drive. And so it makes sense that training should go into that, right? So the other thing that we opened recently, we've, we're starting a vault beach volleyball program in our athletics department. And you may have seen some activity over in the athletics area that was building our beach volleyball courts. Those are now complete and we're ready to open that program up next year. We've, we're adding a position for a trainer to support all of our sports teams, but, but was prompted by the addition of that program. So exciting news there. And on that front, too, we are in the midst of working on our master facilities plan for the next round of funding. And things are looking good with the tax, tax revenues in California. So hopefully, those things will move, move ahead more quickly than, than they might otherwise. But in the plans, our multicultural center, a new welcome center, a performing arts center. So please take note as I say that we are opening the campus. We want to see Miramar College be an integral part of the community. Keep that performing arts center in mind because that, that of course would be available as well. So years down the road, maybe, but, but coming. And that's it. That's my, my report. Thank you so much for allowing time for me to, to speak with you and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I just want to thank you for making time to fit in with our community. You guys are doing a great job over there.
No, thank you so much, Joe. Yeah, absolutely. It's what we're here for. We're here for you and for the students and for the community, economic development and all those good things.
I think Carol has a question for you.
Yes, I'm very pleased to see President Lundberg here because what I have to present, what you have, what you just said is very encouraging to what I have to present when I have my time to speak. So I hope you'll hang around for my little spiel.
Well, if I wasn't going to, I'm going to now. And certainly, please reach out in any way that I can help, Carol. I'll put my email in the chat box for all of you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Move on now. Do we have from the Branch Library, Ina Gibson?
I'll speak up. Ina is on vacation this week. However, I spoke earlier today with Tim Mountain.
Wonderful.
And he is at the library. He is the replacement at Miramasa.
Am I hearing? I'm hearing an effort.
Yeah, if you pause just a moment, Jeff's going to go ahead and mute everybody again, and then we'll have you unmute, Pam.
Okay, you can unmute yourself now.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Okay, let's start over. Yes, those of you who know Danny May, who has worked with us, she's been at the Miramasa Library. She has now transferred to the Carmel Valley Library. But her replacement at Miramasa is a great guy, Tim Mountain. And he told me that Ina's on vacation, but he sent some flyers about library activities. And I asked Jeff if he might be able to screen share those flyers quickly to help give us an update on what's happening with the library.
Yeah, I think what I'll do is I'll just share their their calendar. The thing, the other, there are flyers that you can, can click on here if you go to their, their their schedule and see what they are. But as you can see, they have a lot of activities going on. They are closed for a couple of days around Christmas and New Year's, but that's, that's all. The interesting thing, a new, new one that they have here is Mandarin Chinese Storytime. Pam is actually in Mandarin Chinese?
I believe it is, yes. And I noticed that they have the Bibliomaniacs Book Club meets tomorrow evening. The Band Book Club doesn't meet in December because it's the last Tuesday of the month, and that's just too far into the holidays. However, the book, the Band Book Club, we'll be reading and discussing in January is a longer book, so people who might be interested should check it out now. It's called The Blind Assassin by Margaret Atwood. So since that's the book group I'm involved with, I'll put in a plug for it because it's people who have read it before have told me it's a complicated but very worthwhile storyline, one of those layered things. Yeah, back to other activities, Jeff. Were you calling attention to anything in particular?
No, I think, again, there are a lot of things on the calendar. I think I would encourage people to browse the calendar and you can see all the different things that are are going on at the library.
Right. And the library is open for people to go in if people are fully vaccinated. Masks are not required, but recommended. So that's the current status. And there are limitations on how many people can be in a meeting. That sort of policy changes, but it's always up to date on the signs. So if anybody has any questions, just ask how things are going on. So.
Any questions for Pam? Hi, thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Last on the agenda, Scripps Mesa Fireworks, Michael Spencer.
Oh, well, that's me again because Michael Spencer has an early morning flight for business tomorrow, but I exchanged texts with him. And so what he says is Scripps Mesa Fireworks is working with Pyro Spectaculars and the San Diego Fire Department's Special Events Department to determine the feasibility of a new site for 2022. We hope to have more news soon. At this time, we can only report that we are working as diligently as possible to make 2022 happen for the community. And he says, please pay attention to our website and to our social media pages to find out how you can help make donations for 2022. Once we have our site selected and approved. So that's the word.
Fantastic. Thank you, Pam. Going to move into elected officials. Before I do that, we have Carol has signed up an open forum. I've had one other person reach out. If you want to speak in open forum, go ahead and message me so I can add you to our list. For elected officials first from San Diego Unified, Sabrina Bazo.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to report, I was actually at Walker Elementary today. I'm trying to get around to all the schools to do site visits. And because I haven't spent much time at Walker and it's a fantastic school. We, about half the students there are actually English language learners. They have a fantastic early education program there and they actually have about 50 kids waiting to get into that program. And their TK, which is Transitional Kindergarten, those are the four-year-olds, is a fantastic program as well. And the principal is excited about next year because those students will be, you know, that much more ready to learn for kindergarten. And we do have a new principal at Walker this year and she's doing a great job. So that was the first thing I wanted to share. I just, well, I should say I just got back, but it was in San Diego. The California School Board Association met and it was great just talking to school board members from all over the state because we're all kind of dealing with a lot of the same issues. So that was really interesting. And a lot of the San Diego Unified District Leadership was presenting at all of the meetings. So, you know, me being new, seeing that, it's great. I mean, I kind of knew that already that we're, you know, kind of helping to lead the state when it comes to education. But a lot of our district staff represented at that meeting and a lot of great information. And I'm also excited to announce that we are finally down to, for the superintendent search. They, we have finalized the candidates that the school board members are going to actually interview and we're going to do those interviews starting on Thursday. And the finalists from that will be either two or three candidates. There'll be some opportunity for a community forum. So people from the community can vet those candidates as well. And when I find out more information about that, I'll let you know. But we are actually on target now to announce mid-January to hopefully have a new superintendent in place. So it's been almost a year in the making, but we're, we're getting close. And I think that's it for now. Listen, anyone has any questions for me?
That's excellent news, Sabrina. Thank you. Next up from the Office of Councilmember Chris Kate, Sheldon Zeman.
Hi, everybody. Happy holidays and probably won't see each other again till after the holidays. So I hope everyone has a safe holiday and New Year. There is six Boy Scouts have become Eagle Scouts. That's in Troop 1203 in the community of Mira Mesa. They will be recognized at the Beranta Chapel. That's on Coastwood Road. The ceremony will begin at 11:00 AM on January 22nd. Congratulations to the six Eagle Scouts. Proclamation honoring the 50th anniversary of National University. That'll be presented on December 10th via Zoom. And the council member will preside over that presentation. Travis Court needs a little bit of resurfacing or a lot of resurfacing. There was a dip in a road in, in Travis Court that they discovered when the city team went out there, discovered the drain pipe warrants repair. The pipe will be addressed by the Stormwater Department. Unfortunately, there are not current, currently any projects funded to resurface or reconstruct the, the pavement on Travis Court. But at least that dip in the road, maybe they'll be able to do something to that storm green, which could collapse. And then again, that would be terrible. The Seventh Annual Toys for Tots Breakfast hosted by Councilmember Chris Kate. That'll be Saturday, December 18th, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM in McDonald's in Sorento Valley on Scranton Road. It's free. Please bring an unwrapped toy of at least the value of $15. Also, I would like any of the members here to please send me and I'll put my email again in the, in the chat room. If there's any businesses opening up that you know, please send those to me. We would like to acknowledge the new businesses opening. Also, the Mira Mesa Teen Center, the, the Ballpark Administrator, the Program Manager, the Special Projects Department of Real Estate Assets and the Airport Management in the City of San Diego, they've all been chatting with the county recently. And they're continuing to make progress on the project. They plan on doing some community engagement work with the community. And they've asked the mayor and the council member offices to participate in those. So it looks like the public meetings on the Mira Mesa Teen Center will be January or early February. Very so. And I guess that is, you know, my report for tonight. Again, happy holidays to everybody and, and have a safe New Years.
Sheldon, any questions for Sheldon? Okay.
That's a good.
Happy holidays.
Same to you, Barry.
Next up from the Office of Brian Mainshine, Rob Newsen is Rob here.
Don't see him.
From the Office of Mayor Todd Gloria, Michaela Wall. I put a link in the chat from Michaela. They are currently hosting the Mayor for a Day. See if I can scroll back and find it. Yes, Mayor for a Day Contest. You can go to sandiego.gov/mearforaday. And the winner, the, the student who wins will shadow Mayor Gloria for a day at City Hall. From the Office of County Supervisor, Tara Lawson-Reemer, Amanda Berry.
Thanks, Barry. Good to see everyone. And my name's Amanda Berry, she/her, and I am a Health Policy Advisor for Supervisor Lawson-Reemer. And I'm excited to give a few updates from our office today. For the county, first, for those of you who aren't following the calendar, our next board meeting is tomorrow. So lots of agenda for the last meeting of the year. And with the supervisors really taking action to ensure that our regional homelessness response system is set up those in need. We know that in North County, there's eight different cities, staff, resource pools, and so we recognize that challenge and Supervisor Lawson-Reemer co-docketed a letter with Supervisor Desmond to propose a new outreach team that's made up of highly trained responsive outreach workers, not law, law enforcement, to do this coordinated response across the cities and get people help faster. And it was passed unanimously back in April. So we see like a policy gets passed, but then what actually happens when it goes into effect? And so now the team is actually in the fields. They're launched in North County and it's really designed to build trust, shifting away from the approach of having law enforcement show up when there's somebody experiencing homelessness as the first line of response to having a, a social worker or an outreach worker do that initial intake response. And we have to recognize that our approach to homelessness has to be really humane and human centered. And we're really looking forward to the data from this pilot program of really doing this kind of infusion of resources into the regions and see what is going to happen. And I'll put a chat about that in the, in the link in the chat to that, to that article that came out in the UT. And then we all know how important our beaches and coastlines are. And so I wanted to mention and the Supervisor Lawson-Reemer is taking action to end harmful offshore oil drilling. And we know that the amplified oil spill in Orange County was just another wake up call that fossil fuels not only warm our planet, but are fouling our coastlines and poisoning our wildlife and communities. And we saw lots of tar balls on the pristine beaches and and that's why Supervisor Lawson-Reemer was proud to co-author a resolution with Chair Nathan Fletcher to support federal action to end new offshore oil drilling in federal waters. Congressman Mike Levin's been leading this charge in the County of San Diego and we stand with him to do that. So I'll put a link for that. If you haven't gotten your booster shot, be sure to do it. We know the holidays are around the corner and we want everybody to be able to gather with friends and family. So I'm here to answer questions. And again, thanks all for having me.
Thank you, Amanda. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just had a, well, I wanted to know if there was any updates that you might have, Amanda, about the redistricting for the county? And how that might affect Mira Mesa area with regard to who, who's going to be our county board supervisor? Is it still going to be Tara Lawson-Reemer?
And I, for redistricting questions, I, I have to direct you to our campaign staff. But the, the next meeting is coming up, I have a meeting on Friday and then there's one, I believe, on the 10th of the next redistricting meeting. And I can put a link in there for that.
Yeah, you can put a link, maybe at least to like the, the most recent map because I think I was trying to find it and it was kind of confusing. So.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Thanks.
Hi, thank you, Amanda. We'll look for that link. Is anyone here from the Office of State Senator Tony Atkins? Okay, and from the Office of Congressman Scott Peters? Right, very none. That's the end of our elected official session. We're going to move on to open forum and first is Carol Platt.
Unmute, please.
Yes, yes. I should know this because I run Zoom meetings for the Community Garden. For those of you who don't know me, and Barry has been my neighbor for how many years now? I'm so glad to see you and involved with the town council. My name's Carol Platt. I am a resident of Mira Mesa for 20 years. I've actually been in San Diego 52 years. And I'm a retired San Diego high school teacher and currently manager of the Mira Mesa Presbyterian Church Community Garden. For those of you who have not seen it yet, it's right across the street. It's on Mira Mesa Boulevard, right across the street from the soup plantation. Moment of silence since they've closed. We've been very successful. We celebrated our eighth anniversary just last month. And we have served many residents in Mira Mesa and even beyond that. Especially those who live in the condos and the apartments around the garden. We knew that, we thought that when we opened the garden that we would be there forever. Because that land belongs to the church and they had not had funds to build the sanctuary that had been planned, what, 40 some years ago? But as Murphy's Law happens now and then, it turns out that the sanctuary that has been put on hold is now in the works to be built on that land on the corner. So I'm basically here and I could go on forever talking about the garden. It is such a passion of mine. I helped start the garden and I'm that the manager, as I said. But I'm here in brief to ask your help in finding an alternative location for the garden. I've looked, we actually got word about this possible happening about three years ago. And I actually spoke to the town council, I think was right before the pandemic closed everything down. So we've been looking around for a local alternate location, but not having much luck. As you know, land is a premium here in Mira Mesa. So the one thing and the reason I addressed President Lundberg earlier is that one of our former gardeners, Angie Smith, who was a teacher at Merrimack College. She works in the Child Development Section, I believe. She had mentioned to me that there was rumor that a community garden was in the works or possibly in the works at Merrimack College. So that was exciting to hear. That's about it. I don't, unless you have questions, that's kind of our need right now is try to find another location.
How much land? How much land do you need?
I think we have about two thirds of an acre right now. And that was suitable for what we did all these years. We had the plots filled. We always had a waiting list. So we could actually go bigger, but the, the space that we're using right now is about two thirds of an acre.
And how long do you have before, let's see, I'm muted. How long do you have before the garden will shut down?
And we work on six month seasons and our current season is over in March and John Sivers, who is our church management team leader, told me that because of permits and all that takes to build another structure, it could be up to a year before they break ground, but we have to plan ahead, obviously, because we have all those materials. And being an avid recycler, I just really am passionate about trying to find a location to move that material to at least as much as possible. So it doesn't end up in the landfill. So that's where we're at right now.
Wes has his hand up, Barry.
Yes, Wes.
Yeah, thank you. So Carol, we're, yeah, real estate set at a prime at the college too. I had not heard about a community garden, but not surprised that there might be some discussion of that. What would be a possibility is between the, the housing along the I-15 and the college where the parking garage is near the transit center. There's a strip of land along there that's on top of a pipeline that we can't use for much. I don't know if that would be eligible or not, but please email me and I'll be happy to look into that. I don't know if you'd be interested in that, that space. And if it would work, I'm not sure about the sunlight. I think it has good sunlight, but, but email me and we can talk more about that.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Marv?
Well, as Jeff will tell you that we have at least four abandoned, or I should say vacant properties, lots in Mira Mesa that we've been talking about for 25 years that Part D left up on a comma, one right there by, I guess it's Sepata, I think, right there on the corner by Sandberg Park. We have a number of them in the, in the community. We have just kind of let them slide. There's one at the very south end of Weston Hill and that might be something that we can resurrect and see what those were, they were. Again, because we've often talked about converting them and of course you're talking from a raw lot, but they're there.
Who's the contact person for those, Marv?
I gotta, I gotta think it's, I'd have to look at the ownership now, but it was Part D for a long time. So, but I'd have to pull them up, see.
Let's do that because there's no point in them sitting vacant if we have an immediate use for them. Thanks, Marv.
The one on the very south end of Weston Hill, those, those folks have kind of reached over and kind of adopted that little area. There is, if you look at the map, there is a, I want to say a little sliver and I want to say it's 15 to 20 feet wide. It wasn't access. We talked about at one point when we were doing something with a canyon, but you know, I, I know they didn't take title. So we can do some work on that. So let me, let me see what I can do.
Um, Barry, I thought on that real estate assets, CS San Diego would have the ownership of all the parcels. Maybe that might be a, a beginning or, you know, a way to, to find out who owns those parcels. So what do you think?
Yeah, it's, a title company can give it to me. I'm, I'm a realtor, so I can, I can track them down. So.
Okay.
Okay, since you have offered several options and I am excited to hear that. I'm just going to say that I field the emails that come into the garden. And so if anyone has any feedback for me, if you'll go to mmpccommunitygarden@gmail, I will be the one receiving that. So welcome any of your input that way.
We, we've talked before, Carol, I was the one who was kind of growing those earthworms. I was trying to get to you some years ago, three or four years ago. So.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Well, we're doing that at the garden now, too.
Good.
Very good. And Carol, put that email address in the chat to make sure that everyone has it, and it's correct, so they can get in touch with you.
I am not sure how to do this. So I just click on chat?
Yes. And when you click on chat, it should say to everyone.
Okay, click on that. Oh.
And just type your message.
Okay.
Perfect. All right. While Carol's doing that, I have two more people who have signed up for the open forum session. The first is Tommy Howe.
Thanks, Barry. I appreciate it. Great to see everyone. Tommy Howe, running for San Diego City Council in District Six here in Mira Mesa. Carol, if Barry is your neighbor, that means that you're one of my neighbors as well. So.
Okay, I'm in the village.
Yeah, me too. So so good to see you, their neighbor. And Marvin, kudos on the earthworms. That is proper composting, my friend. Well done. You know, I'm glad to hear about the updates with what's happening with Gold Coast and Parkdale. Obviously, we've been advocating for getting both those roads rebuilt for for many, many years. I lived off of Gold Coast for six years, and that's pretty much the reason I'm running for office. That's the reason I was the endorsed Democratic candidate in 2018. That's the reason I'm running now in 2022. But, you know, once we get those roads rebuilt, we do have a number of other roads that really need attention that also have to be rebuilt here in Mira Mesa, where we've really suffered from deferred maintenance for far too long, for decades. Tyrolian, Berry Knoll, Saluda, Stanfield Circle, Ambassador, Royal Anne, Pisces with the big road folds on it. I mean, I'm sure you've got some other roads that I'm forgetting to mention right now that I'm happy to talk with you about. Although I was happy to see that the west end of Flanders and Jade Coast was at least resurfaced. That was good news. And Port Royale, after like 30 years, was finally resurfaced. But we still, those are roads that you could resurface. We're talking about roads that need to be rebuilt from the ground up, where the roadbed is just absolute toast after 50 odd years. That has to happen. That's obviously going to be a priority for me if I'm elected to San Diego City Council. Thinking more about housing, too, as a county planning commissioner, you know, I know we've got a lot of development going into the canyon, and I still can't get a straight answer from anyone as to where they think all the cars are going to wind up going. Obviously, we want to get Carroll Canyon Road done at once. But we are going to see some impacts in Southern Mira Mesa from a lot of that traffic, perhaps heading up a resurfaced Gold Coast to access the freeway, if they're not necessarily using Carroll Canyon Road. So those are going to be concerns as we welcome more neighbors into into the neighborhood. I also would say that with the District Six race, you know, the primary election's not until early June. But there is going to be a forum opportunity, and I'd invite you to join us at the San Diego Democratic Club. And that's going to be happening a week from today, not to be partisan, but it's going to be happening a week from today at 5:00 p.m. And there's more information on how you can either dial in or attend the forum in person with all of at least the Democratic candidates running for the D6 seat at tommyhow.com. That's T-O-M-M-Y-H-O-U-G-H.com. I'd be happy to go and drop that into the chat, Barry. And the last thing I'd say is, I was very sorry to hear that Al Radick died a couple of weeks ago. I actually heard about that at Ted's Memorial. So I was, I was very sorry to hear about that. I liked Al. He was a, he was a good guy. Anyways, I appreciate everyone's time. It's great to see everyone. And have a good evening.
Thank you, Tommy. And next in open forum, we have Kent Lee.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see all of you again. My name is Kent Lee. I'm also running for San Diego City Council and to represent District Six. I think, as many of you know, I'm a 15-year resident here in Mira Mesa. My wife and I have been raising our two young children. They actually just turned two and four this fall. And my engagement in the community really ranges from serving on the Mira Mesa Community Planning Group for over eight years with many of you here. I'm serving on the founding team with the D6 Night Market with Barry and others. And then also through my nonprofit career, where I worked with families throughout our region as part of the Boy Scouts of America, in part helping to oversee our past Geology Day partnership in the past with Vulcan Materials. Really, I'm running to bring my depth of experience building collaborative community efforts, managing multimillion-dollar budgets, and more to City Council, because we know we need to tackle our greatest challenges regarding housing attainability, compassionate solutions to homelessness, and also helping to empower all our small businesses. Just want to share that I am proudly endorsed by Council President Sean Hilo Rivera, Councilmember Monica Montgomery, as well as County Supervisor Nora Vargas, along with hundreds of other civic community and business leaders throughout our region. And I will just invite those who want to learn more about the campaign to visit our website at kentleyforst.com. Also leave some information in the chat. And just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season ahead. Again, my name is Kent Lee, running for San Diego City Council in District Six. Thanks.
Thank you, Kent. Those are the three people who have signed up for open forum. The next section is other MMTC committee reports, and that's going to be very, very short. I spoke with Jonathan for the treasurer's report. As you realize, we really are not doing much of anything right now because COVID has pretty much canceled everything we do. So that budget can be made available on the website, but there's really no significant change from last month. Banner District Jennifer let me know that she can't be here tonight. So we'll get an update from her in January. And on membership, we'll have a new membership chair starting in January. Yvonne Negron, who was here but had to step away, will be our new membership person. And at that time, we'll get an update for the January meeting. That's going to be it for tonight. A little longer than I thought we would be, but it's still early in the evening. I want to thank everyone who is here. Remind everybody of all the redistricting that's going on. We've got city, we've got county, we've got assembly, we've got state senate. Take a look at those websites. There are some very interesting things going on with relation to Mira Mesa. And your voice is going to be incredibly important in this process. We have, I believe, the city meeting tomorrow night. We have the county meeting on Thursday. Both of those are coming to a close. We want to make sure that our voices are heard and that we get a city and county district that is working for Mira Mesa. Carol, I think I saw your hand up. Did you have some, one last thing to say?
I'm not familiar with the chat feature, so I entered our email address. What, do I have to click on anything after that? Or can you see it now?
Let's see. Do we see it in the chat, everybody?
I'm not seeing it. Just hit return.
Here it is. Okay, you did it.
First time. Okay, great.
Appreciate it. Sheldon, I have your message. I'm going to chat with you in just a moment. And everyone else, thank you. Thank you for another year of working through our COVID protocols. I hope that everyone has a wonderful holiday season, and we're all back together in January, and we can keep our fingers crossed that maybe that will be the beginning of in-person meetings again.
Good job, Barry.
Good job. So Barry, our transition board meeting is a week from tonight, December 12, 7:00 p.m. on Zoom. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the current and future board members will all receive a link to that meeting.
Okay.
I have one last question. What, is this town council meeting on the same Monday every month?
We are always the first Monday, except when the first Monday is a holiday. So that always happens in September. We meet the second Monday because of Labor Day. Occasionally, New Year's Day is on a Monday, but that doesn't happen this year. Our January meeting, which we're deciding about whether that will indeed be our first in-person meeting, is Monday, January 3, right? Somebody else who has a calendar?
That's correct.
That is correct. Right?
Board meeting is the second.
And that is Zoom also?
And board meeting is Zoom, and we may well stick with Zoom for board meetings. I'm not, we'll probably talk about that next week, right?
Right. We may do that for the first month or two.
Will I be forwarded the coordinates for the Zoom meeting on the second Monday?
Absolutely.
You will indeed.
Thanks. That's good.
All right. Thank you very much, and good night.
Good night.
Good night.